Bradley.
Here.
Commissioner Hallie.
There.
Commissioner Kine.
Here.
Commissioner Mobley. It's not here, Vice Chair Saitz.
Here.
And Commissioner Wells.
Here.
Great. Next on our agenda is approval of our minutes from January twenty fifth, twenty twenty-two. Do I hear any motions or discussions?
I move that we approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Katie.
All right, roll call vote. Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Chairman Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner Kine.
Yes.
Vice Chair Saitz.
Yes.
And Chairman Wells, or Commissioner Wells, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we're going to open up the floor for a couple of oral comments from the public. Members of the public may be heard on any item of interest, not on the agenda. Speakers addressing the commission will be limited to three minutes per speaker. He advised that by law, the commission is not allowed to deliberate or take action on any issues presented during the oral comments. And as you can see in the screen, we have the login information, at which time you'll hear a prompt. And when you have that prompt, it's like raising your hand, and Katie will acknowledge you to be able to have your time on the floor. Again, please keep in mind, it's only going to be three minutes per comment, and when you do start, please state your name. And begin your comment from there. This is where we have dead air silence, folks.
I'd call in if I wasn't here. Kidding.
That would be funny if you had somebody do that. I think in all our times, I don't think we've ever had one person in a public comment that I know of.
Not at the beginning, ever since I've been doing this.
Yeah. Is there a, I've been meaning to ask this of Liz and Katie, is there a minimum timeframe that we should be having this open before we look to close the floor on the public comment? Is there a statute or any kind of a guideline on that?
I'm not aware of any.
I, I'm not either. Normally, there would be, you know, we would be in person, so it would be anybody that was present would have an opportunity to speak. I can check, though. I'll check and see if in this iteration of the Brown Act, there's a requirement.
Yeah, so I was just thinking about that, and I didn't want us to be recusing what we should be following. We've been, what, three minutes in? I'll entertain a motion.
I motion, I make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Katie, the floor is yours, I think. Do we need a vote?
We do not need to vote to close public comment.
Okay, thank you for the reminder. I'll probably always ask that.
We technically don't need a motion either. You can close it yourself.
Oh, I can. Well, I'd like to.
I think folks like to make the motion.
Well, I kind of like a group decision on some of those things to make sure nobody has any thoughts on it, but so I guess the next is a point of our agenda is our business, which is the public hearing to consider a recommendation to the Fortuna City Council to amend the Fortuna Municipal Code regarding state mandated procedures for SB nine urban lot splits in two-unit projects by amending Title seventeen zoning regulations of the Fortuna Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen point zero nine, standard mandated procedures in Title sixteen subdivisions, Section sixteen dot zero four dot zero seven zero urban lot splits. At this time, I will turn the floor over to Liz to give us any staffing background on it.
Thank you, Chairman Bradley and Planning Commission. So this topic was on your agenda at the last planning commission meeting. At that time, I gave a presentation of the SB nine zoning standards, or the SB nine state law that triggered the council to adopt an urgency ordinance to implement and have some, a certain set of limited standards under SB nine. It is a state mandate, so we would be operating under the state regulations regardless of any action that the city took. So to have a local code, you know, to implement and set some limited standards is, you know, beneficial to the city in, you know, just knowing, having an order, having direction on how to implement it, and then beneficial to the public. You know, just clarifies the state standards. So tonight, this is a regular ordinance, the one we're operating under now is an urgency ordinance, which is perfectly valid, but the you know, the city attorney suggests that we adopt a maybe more, I don't know, legally secure, or you know, just, or just a regular ordinance. And also, it would give us an opportunity to, you know, have some more time to review the code and maybe consider some of the objective standards that might be adopted. So I'm going to go ahead and go to the PowerPoint. It's basically the same one as last time, but I did it. This is too long. Now, this is it. I thought I shortened it more than that. Okay, I add, I took some out, and then I added some, so. But the, I'm just going to give a much quicker super review, maybe for the benefit of the public in a refresher. There we go. Okay, I guess this is the first one. Okay, so SB nine requires ministerial approval of urban lot splits. That's just a regular, any size of a single-family zoned parcel into two parcels. So as small as twelve hundred square feet. And also allows, requires ministerial approval of what are called two-unit projects. That's two units on a single parcel, and I showed you this overhead in existing or a vacant lot may be developed with and one additional single-family residence. So you end up with two per parcel. And then if the subdivision option were pursued, then you could have two and two, so a total of four, where originally only one would be allowed, and that's in any single-family zone citywide. So a minimum of twelve hundred square feet, these are all under the state. But each lot must be at least forty percent of the original lot, so there is some size limitation, so you can't can't split the lot into something super tiny, and then something else really large. It must be, you know, close to fifty fifty. It require access and utility easements, and offset improvements are limited. Where SB nine projects are prohibited in historic areas, wetlands, earthquake zones, high fire hazard zones, FEMA, under your floodplain, prime farm land, and land center conservation easement. So the state law did give some protection to sensitive land, land issues, land traits. So two-unit requirements, oh, so the, okay, so the state says that you must allow at least an eight hundred square foot unit. You can't restrict the size to smaller than that. No setback for an existing structure, so if it's non-conforming, we can't require that to be corrected. Minimum four-foot side and rear. If the unit, so we can't prevent an eight hundred square foot unit. Even if the setbacks don't allow it, we must allow it to four feet. One space, one parking space per unit, and zero if it's within a half mile of a high-quality transit corridor, which we do not have that type of a bus route, because in Fortuna, for a high-quality transit corridor, it missed, the buses must stop at least once every fifteen minutes during peak periods. Rental and occupancy restrictions, short-term rentals are prohibited. For the lot splits, an applicant must live in the residence for at least three years. And renters and affordable housing cannot be not be displaced or required to move out as a result of the development. So this zoning standards that did get adopted. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, so these are the urgency standards, and these are somewhat of open to consideration. These are somewhat restrictive, but they, in that regard, they protect the, you know, the neighborhoods, they put some kind of limitations and prevent that super-high density in the existing single-family zones. So the under the urgency ordinance that we're operating under now, and under the draft or the code that is in your staff report that's being proposed. The unit size of the SB nine projects are five hundred to eight hundred square feet for development for a single-family residence. ADUs accessory dwelling units are not allowed on any SB nine parcel. The setbacks of the base zone, you know, whatever of the residential zones project is located in would be implemented. And the code is written where the four-foot limitation or the four-foot setback that's required by the state could be utilized. The state law does not allow the zoning standards or the setbacks to prohibit an eight hundred square foot, so, unit. So that's what would trigger the four-foot setback. So for a normal, you know, development where the project can be designed with the underlying base setbacks, those would prevail. And if, you know, if an eight hundred square foot unit couldn't be built with those setbacks, then it would be allowed to go down to four feet. So there's some protection there, and we are still complying with the state law, so. And then offset improvements where required for health and safety, such as sidewalks for accessibility and safety and certain limitations like that. As, and that would be for, basically for subdivisions. So the proposed zoning standards, these are the ones that are, that have been added since the last meeting. I did do a review of other cities SB nine standards, you know, just to, as I was considering what, what are the range of code sections that could be considered, you know, and still comply with the state SB nine. So those are the ones, basically, you know, it's pretty limited. The state law is pretty restrictive, so most of these are really just expanding on, you know, a stick, identifying the standard that would apply. And kind of basically referencing standards, like in this case, referencing a standard that already exists, and just calling it out and making it more clear and easier to implement the code. So, for example, lot access. So, you know, as a unit, as another unit is constructed, and it may be behind the main residence, the state law does allow us to for one, require easements to that second unit, and typically, that would more likely be in a subdivision where you're going to split that back lot. And then you would require an easement to access that back lot. But in any case, in either case, whether it's an SB two lot split or an SP, I'm sorry, SB nine two-unit development, the, the access that would need to be required would be the standards that are in the municipal code and in the Fortuna improvement standards and specifications. And typically, the standard that we do utilize on that kind of a development, say, as opposed to a major subdivision, but in this case, you know, it's going to be a a pretty minor lot split. The drive, the accessway really refers to the driveway that goes to the back, and typically, in this kind of a development, we would require the twenty-foot standard that is in the code. So instead of calling out the specific, the twenty-foot, because there are a couple of other situations, it could be twenty-four, could be eighteen to twenty-four is really the range that we apply based on, you know, the density, the the size of the lot, and really, typically, it's the number of units that are going to be using that lot. And in this, you know, for an SB nine, I would expect that in most cases, it would just be adding an extra lot, but, you know, there are some other cases where it could go into an area that's more dense and would need the wider, you know, so we have a range of eighteen to twenty-four. And then for parking. So that, in black, that is the, what you saw last, at the last meeting. And then I just added a specification, all other parking requirements of the Fortuna Municipal Code shall be required. So that references the city's parking standards. And so I see how that, how I see that being implemented in this case is really the size of the parking space is eight and a half by nineteen is the minimum parking space size. Usually in a R one-six or suppressing a family development on, you know, say, a bigger house or the typical new houses that we see. They actually, you know, develop a larger parking space than eight and a half by nineteen. You know, two-car garage, and then the two spaces in front of it, that's, you know, that's going to be larger. So the minimum, so we just wanted to reference that parking standard, and then that section that's crossed out is really not necessary, because it's just saying that, hey, they can go larger if they want, but I think that's just kind of redundant and obvious and not, you know, and it's not necessary to add that in, it's just extra wordage. And then design standards. This is a proposed standard, so, and it really, this section just references that, the unit that's on. So if it's a second unit on a site with an existing house, that the basic design standards of that existing house will be mimicked in the new unit. And then if it's a, if it's a lot split, let's see. So if it's a vacant lot, then the two units shall use similar architectural style, materials, colors, and finishes. And then the third one is that if a garage is converted to a new unit, then the garage door itself will be covered over in materials that match the existing to match existing exterior, the wall. So, so just to blend it in and not have a closed-off garage door, you know, basically, still visually existing in that unit. So that's a pretty standard kind of a design requirement. So then I just kind of compiled, oh, I'm sorry, so these are the ADU design standards that we have adopted when the city adopted the accessory dwelling unit code back, and I think it was September, kind of to consider additional, these are really similar standards. This is not in your packet, so this is the first new information. So, for example, our ADU ordinance allows block coverage of fifty percent, and I think I missed adding that code section in the previous slide. So what the proposed code says is that the thirty-five percent block coverage that we have now for single-family developments will prevail unless it prohibits an eight hundred square foot unit. So it's similar in that regard to the the setback. Where if they can't make the, if they can't make it fit, then they can have the reduced setback. So the proposed code says that if they can't meet, meet our existing thirty-five percent, then they can have an exception, an automatic exemption, and have more than thirty-five percent coverage. So the ADU, I just thought it was interesting, it just has a standard maximum lock coverage fifty percent. So that's the only place in the code where that appears. So it's a little more permissive. And then in our ADU ordinance, it says that detached ADUs, the height of a detached accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed sixteen feet. So it's basically saying that detached second units are limited to sixteen feet. And then they could have an exception with a use permit, which is what we allow for accessory dwelling units. Normally, they can just be fifteen feet. But they can't exceed that with a use permit, and, you know, approved by the planning commission. So that's something to consider for the SB nine two-unit developments. Does the city want to limit those to a single story if it's detached, or as it's written now, it would allow it a two-story unit? And then the ADU ordinance, for an attached ADU, they're allowed to be the same height as the residence to which they're, to the primary residence. So that's something to consider. And then the ADU ordinance is the entrance orientation, so the main door of the, of the detached unit shall face the front or interior of the parcel, so it's not going to face the neighbor, it's going to face the street or the interior. So those are kind of some, just some ideas to consider. And then for privacy, our ADU ordinances that to protect the privacy of adjacent properties, the following requirements apply to walls with windows that are within eight feet of an interior side or rear property line. So those units for a single story, six-foot fence would be built on the property line, and then the clerestory or translucent windows for all windows, and those are just the small windows that are kind of higher than normal, placed higher on the wall. What, are the only types of windows that would be allowed. So, and, and they also have to be at least five and a half feet above the jointing floor. And the first second story wall, the clerestory or translucent windows are required for all windows facing the adjacent property, so that they're not looking down into the neighbors. And so this is really addressing the four-foot setback. So since, you know, now we're having properties that are more densely built and more, you know, highly populated and closer to the property lines, it's felt that, you know, it's really the need to protect the privacy of the neighbors to have this kind of privacy measures. And then are the ADU quote code for second-story decks and balconies, that they do have to be ten feet from the side or rear property line if it's adjoining a single-family dwelling. So that's right now, that only applies to ADU standards developments. And then I just kind of tossed in some things that came up in other city standards, and kind of, I'm not necessarily suggesting these. I just thought, you know, for your information and just to compare and get a feel for what other cities do. So for the maximum size of the two-unit developments, it's based, in the city, it's based on the size of the lot. So if it's a smaller lot, less than fifteen thousand square feet, then those units are limited to the smaller size, in this case, eight hundred and fifty square feet. Oh, and that's for one-bedroom or studios. And then if it's a two-bedroom unit, less than, on a less than fifteen thousand square foot lot, and they can go up to a thousand square feet in size. And then lots greater than fifteen thousand feet, that's about a third of an acre. They can go up to twelve hundred square feet, whereas Fortuna's code right now for SB nine limits them to, the units to eight hundred square feet. And then a lot of cities do have affordability requirements for new units, you know, limited to whatever, very low, low, moderate income categories. And I think those are for cities that, you know, are very proactive in providing affordable housing. So this is a way of allowing, you know, the developers or the property owners to have the higher-density properties, but also, okay, something for the city is, hey, okay, you know, we want you to, we want those to be designated for affordable, or, you know, income-restricted families. And then, let's see. Oh, this is just another variation of, of the size, based on the parcel size, size of the unit, based on the parcel size. And then, again, there's another, this is similar to our ADU, there's a maximum height of sixteen feet. In this case, sixteen feet, if it's in the if it's less than, you know, if it's got like the four-foot setback, so it's the setbacks are smaller than what would normally be allowed, but then if that unit does meet the setbacks, then the height can go up to twenty-seven feet, because it's within the regular setbacks. So, I know these pictures still appeared, I don't know if you wanted to probably not discuss those, and then I'll turn that back to the commission for any questions and discussion.
Anybody have any questions or comments for Liz?
Katie can probably take it off of, oh, I can stop sharing.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for making those changes that we talked about. Those are very, very easy to understand, Liz. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it. That was pretty straightforward.
So, yeah, what I found is that we're really limited on what we can do. You know, the state is really clear on mandating these types of developments, so that's basically what we have, and then, you know, within a certain range, you know, in that urgency ordinance, we've limited the ability to build like large units. And that seemed to be the direction that the council wanted to go. You know, I mean, that's something to think about, or just to toss into the discussion as well, is that, you know, some cities want infill development, and they want to create more housing. So they might be more lenient on this, on this size, so that's another direction, but you know, that would be a recommendation that the planning commission would make. And then you know, I just feel like I would continue to look at, you know, regardless of what we do tonight, I think it would be my role, and, and I'd be interested in doing it as well as to see, you know, what other cities continue to do for those objective design standards. And what I presented to you tonight is really you know, what I've seen out there, and I haven't seen a lot of variation from, you know, it's, it's really similar to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, where the state said, well, this is what you have to do, and you don't have very much with, with a room within those objective design standards. So you know, we've, we've looked at the design, we've got the, you know, the architectural you know, requirement to be similar to what you would see in a single-family residence, and I think that's, you know, without getting into like minute detail, you know, the siding shall be like this, your roofline shall be this, your shingles and windows and all of that. You know, and most people are going to conform to that anyway, just out of their own self-interest, so.
I honestly don't see that this is going to impact our community all that much. The larger, more densely populated areas, I think, will be more affected than we are.
And there's quite a bit of resistance around the state. I was doing some research on this, and there was apparently seventy-one percent of the population is opposed, and there are some communities that are actually putting together organized resistance to implementation of this thing. But I have a question, Liz. So the word ministerial showed up quite a bit, and I'm just curious about your, your understanding of what that means. I, I have mine, but I want to make sure it is accurate.
Yeah, it's used in land use to indicate a staff-approved permit. So, for example, a building permit would be ministerial. You know, I mean, I it's just, it's used in different government code sections, like in CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. Ministerial permits are exempt from CEQA, so they don't, a building permit doesn't need, you know, environmental report, unless, of course, there's you know, environmental report unless, of course, there's exceptions, like is it built, is it a wetland site? Things like that, if there are obvious you know, environmental sensitive issues, but otherwise by state law, a building permit like staff can't direct a building permit to planning commission because it's ministerial. And we can't require CEQA because it's ministerial. So that, that's how you know, the land use and planning field, that's what the that's like the definition of ministerial is.
So in our case, what I understand you to be saying is that 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 then means that it's a staff recommendation that would approve or disapprove anything that fell into this, this SB.
Yes, that's a good point. That's exactly why we wanted to clarify the standards. So the state, you know, the state's standards were a little bit broader, so we can't go, we can't limit it to less than eight hundred square feet in size. So, but it doesn't give an upper value. That if we, if staff tried to say, well, you can't have, you know, a twelve hundred square foot SB nine residential unit. And that would be arbitrary. So that's why, you know, certain areas we needed to have a standard. Otherwise, it would be an arbitrary standard, whereas the state says it has to be an objective standard that we can point to as measurable. And the only discretion, the only time it wouldn't be ministerial is if it was as if someone objected to staff's determination that, you know, that the standard, that your standards aren't being met on your permit. Then it would go to the planning commission. So they would basically appeal it. So if someone doesn't agree with the staff, they have a process and they would go to the planning commission for an appeal.
No, that, that leads to my question, Liz. On page nine of the summary that you gave us, under the heading, specific adverse impacts. It uses the term catch-all exemption. And one of the things I noticed, if you read down further in the terms and definitions, it says the term specific adverse impact is defined to mean a significant quantifiable, direct and unavoidable impact based on objective identified written public health or safety standards, policies or conditions as they exist on the date of the application is deemed complete. The determination is then subject to the appeal to the planning commission. So I guess if there's one thing that we could input out there is some kind of safety issues. One of the things I'm thinking about is is population density. We could look at that as a safety issue and is there a way for us to identify those things in standards? So it would help us to make sure that we don't, and again, I don't see it being a big issue, but it's something that we could use as a well, use their work, quantifiable way of, of controlling some of the density. Help me out here.
Yeah, there's a couple of ways the state doesn't allow us to use density. I do, I believe that it actually says that in the state law. And then with that minimum lot size, so the state is saying that you can go as small as twelve hundred square feet, you know, and that's going to be pretty, pretty dense. So, and that the, the overall lot size can be as small as twenty-four hundred square feet. Which is double.
Well, I guess I'm thinking along the lines, not just so much on the density side, and I'm didn't use the term correctly, but if we were looking at adding more, you know, like two homes per lot, let's say. One of the issues it's going to have impact on is our sewer systems because the pipes may not be able to handle the larger user capacity and that could become a public health issue. Are there things that we could put in place to kind of, you know, control some of that where we can use that for you when it comes to that quote-unquote ministerial?
Yeah, I think that's where, I think that's so for, so if, you know, staff would look to something quantifiable in order to, you know, if, if something did come up on a particular permit. It's a health and safety, you know, issue. We would look to pointing, you know, to something quantifiable. So in the case of, you know, inadequate disposal system. That's actually something that's quantifiable because the, you know, the public works department can easily, pretty easily do a calculation on you know, the capacity of a sewer line and they do it all the time on subdivision. So and that's a, that's a really good example that you brought up. So all the time, you know, subdividers have to demonstrate that they have a sewer capacity and they have their engineers prepare that capacity study or the city can prepare them to. And they may or may not have to upsize the line. So that would be, you know, that's a good example of a potential you know, denial criteria and that, that's something that's quantifiable. I think that meets the state standard.
Same thing with septic, I would think too, based on location of the property and accessibility for maintenance, et cetera, right?
Yeah. Yeah. So I think that's how, you know, I don't know if we can list every potential you know, violation of that.
I was just looking as an opportunity for you that if it came before us, we know how to address it. What, I don't know if we asked this before, do we have any HOAs in Fortuna?
Um, yes.
And are they exempt from this based on their own criteria? Within the HOA.
So they are exempt. I mean, they're not exempt, but their, their standards can prevent an SB nine project. I mean, they're, what do we call those? They're
CCNRs.
CCNRs. Which is the opposite for the accessory dwelling unit regulations. It said that the state law says that they can't override an accessory dwelling unit. But the state law specifically says that they may override.
So double-edged sword.
Yeah. I mean, right now, these are in effect, the SB nine projects are in effect and I doubt if, you know, the HOAs, maybe they're scrambling to adopt that, but as far as I, you know, they can't have that in their requirements right now because it's a new law.
If they could put something in place for their bylaws that may help them if they need it.
Yeah.
So, thank you. Is there any other discussions? If not, I think I'll open this up to public comment at this time. And Katie, would you mind flashing up the information on the screen for us, for the public to be able to know how to call in and in the directions there for. And then I would also like the public to be aware that when you do call in, the clerk will unmute your phone and you'll hear a prompt that will indicate your phone is unmuted. At that time, I would like you to state your name and begin your comment. You'll have three minutes to comment. It will only be on the topic at hand. No other issues will be addressed at that time. And ideally, Katie, I think this is where I'd like to get that information from you. If there's anything out there for a timeline. That way we know when to close public comment.
I'll take a look and then I'll check with Sienna too.
Thank you. This is something I've been thinking about and I just didn't know if there should be a minimum.
Yeah, I think we need to at least give people enough time to, you know, dial and then having trouble connecting, just to give them enough time to manage their call. I don't think we have to wait for people to turn the channel, see what's going on, you know.
Right.
Just give it a reasonable time for them to manage their call.
I was just testing our system as we were talking and it appeared to go through. But I hung up. Just wanted to make sure it worked.
That's why my participant number kept going up and down.
I, I got pushed out. I'm sorry. Maybe you're going to see it's your brother Daryl and your other brother, brother Daryl calling.
My dad's internet's a little weird, so I got pushed out a minute. I apologize.
Yeah, and it took that long to, you know, for me to get in until I spoke. So it does take time.
Good to know. Thanks, Mark. Well, at this time, while we're waiting, I'll just say this, Liz, I just want to say thank you again. It's there's a lot of detail I know you had to go through and, and digest and I guess put it in a place for us to be able to have a nice summary. And I know you had to put a lot of hours in for that, so I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, you know, when over the past year before this came into effect, you know, January first. And it was in the, you know, we'd get emails and we knew that it was going through the legislature and the governor's desk. So you know, cities were starting to scramble the closer it got to the end of the year. So yeah, it was a learning curve and you know, we kind of pause and oh, well, here's another state mandate that we're going to have to start implementing and you know. We operate a lot under state mandates and we don't always appreciate. You know, in this case, you know, as, as was it Sandy pointed out? You know, there was a huge amount of opposition and the League of California Cities really you know, did what they could to dissuade the legislature from adopting it because obviously it's something that takes away local zoning ability. But yeah, it was you know, being directly involved in creating an ordinance, especially in the beginning like this is really helpful when we get questions from the public. You know, it's, it just makes it easier to, to help them right up front instead of, oh, well, let's look through the state code. And we did, that's actually what we did with the ADU. ADU law, which was adopted by the state, I don't know, six or eight years ago, and we were just operating under the state code until we got our, our ordinance or local ordinance adopted last fall. So, you know, I kind of learned from that that it's better to be upfront with these things instead of scrambling for a while.
I, I wanted to ask Mike, Mike's the one that brought up the opposition, correct? Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to ask, is that? I'll ask anybody. Is that opposing on like countywide or citywide in these areas? I tried to look it up and I couldn't find anything about it.
What I did was I I Googled, just Googled resist SB nine.
Okay.
I came across, there's the city, I believe it's Los Altos, which is just south of San Francisco. But north of Palo Alto and it's very, very wealthy area. I think the average housing cost there is about five million dollars. They're claiming that, that this SB nine would create a negative environment for the bobcats and the mountain lions that live there. Probably not going to fly, but that was one I came across. I also came across a poll that said seventy-one percent of people in California were opposed to this, but the state did it anyhow.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, it's, I think it's clear to all of us what, what the objective is and it's understandable. And, but if there is and also there's a term, Liz, that I came up with, it's not rezoning, they call it upzoning. Familiar with that? I'm sure you are. Upzoning?
Yes.
That's what they refer to this as, it's upzoning, not rezoning.
Wow.
So yeah, that was basically increasing the density.
Right.
Yeah. So that mountain lion story, if that's a good one to look up, it's pretty entertaining. So it's the city of Woodside, which is
Woodside, that's right.
In that area and they, a couple of weeks ago, they claimed, they declared that they're exempt from this in, in one of the allowable environmental categories habitat as they, they claim that their citywide you know, that citywide they are a mountain lion habitat. And so that was really in the news for a couple of days and I think they, they may have declared it officially, but right away, the state attorney general issued, read them a letter and said, you know, there's no way that you can possibly be classified as mountain lion habitat because basically the city is built out. They are rural. If you, you know, it's a, looks like a beautiful city with horses and, you know, a lot of open space, but also with estates, you know, really, it's a very well-off city. And, oh, and I guess fish and wildlife gave them a call and said, no, you don't fit the criteria for mountain lion. Protected mountain lion habitat. So I think it was just, was it today? I think it was just today or maybe Friday that they conceded. So they caused an uproar and probably had to deal with that internally and they conceded that they were not going to.
It was a good try. You know, before we get too much further, Katie, no calls. Then I know you said I don't have to make a motion, so at this time I'll close, close public comment. Am I correct? I don't have to make a motion, right?
Correct. So you may just close it.
So is there any more continuing conversation we want on this topic? For Liz?
I do have one quick question. All the animations you showed had single-family homes. If people subdivided into four different homes, would they be duplexes or they, do they literally have to be separated homes?
Do you mean the existing homes or the new?
The, the new homes they add.
They can be, yeah, they can be either. They can be detached or attached. Attached could be a duplex.
All right, just checking, just for, you know, aesthetic sake.
Yeah.
My input is that I'm in favor of what we're doing because it's good for the city. However, I echo Mike's concerns. If he's making those concerns, if not, I would step out on my own and say that I would like to see the city oppose SB nine in any way that we can. Perhaps that's impossible, but I, I'd love to see us do that nevertheless.
We're probably going to have to do that at the polls.
Yeah.
Well, that was what was behind my question regarding the ministerial because I, I personally, based on my background and experience, think that there are ways, depending upon the the approach taken by the staff, that there are ways to minimize the impact to some degree. And you said there's very little wiggle room, but there's always some. So it would depend upon how the, how the city implements SB nine and the policies that are carried forth and the attitude, the people that are carrying forth those policies. So you know, I don't know if there's any kind of statement we could make to the council that would bring that point up, or is there anything we could put in our, our, our policies that would send a message to future people making ministerial decisions? I know, you know, there's no problem with the people currently making those decisions, but in the future it could, it could be a problem.
I, I think that staff will do their due diligence to cross every T and dot every I in these applications and make sure that all of the bases are covered. If we try to fudge on that, all we're going to do is open ourselves up for a lawsuit and the city doesn't need that.
Yeah. So I think we would pick up, I mean, we would pick up on any you know, potential issues during the permit review process. You know, any building permit now, we have a really good review team. As far as the building official, planning, the seat engineer, which covers public works and the fire department. And sometimes projects will get referred out even to the health department or you know, depending on what that particular site. So You know, and we look at, we look at the conditions on the property, you know, are there wetlands? You know, we don't technically have any fire hazard or earthquake zones within the city. You know, public works looks very carefully at, at the capacity and at the connections that that, you know, that, that those units are going to make to the city system. What, you know, the fire department is going to pick up on any fire hazards. They've already talked, their concern with this is high density in the outlying areas where access, you know, vehicle access or. They're concerned about having a second access into the neighborhood like Home Avenue, it only has one, one in and out road, so. You know, anything that comes up during that review process, we're going to consider it really carefully. And if it poses a health and safety hazard, then, you know, it, it could well be that, that project won't get approved, so. We have a good review team that's going to pick up anything like that, and. Yeah, I can report back to you how it goes. We've had a couple of inquiries back in January about SB nine projects, and we haven't had anything since, so I don't know how. How many we're going to get.
No, the other, I wish Chris was here tonight, because one of the impacts would be if you get so many homes in a certain area, you get a. Impact with regards to the trash removal and disposal of, which is an environmental issue and a concern for health as well. Because of the timeliness and the storage and so forth and so on. Yeah, is any other questions or comments, otherwise. I'm willing to move this along and get a recommendation.
I'll make that recommendation.
Recommendation that the Fortuna City Council amend the Fortuna Municipal Code by adding. Title seventeen zoning regulation, chapter seventeen point zero nine, state mandated procedures, entitled sixteen subdivision section sixteen point. Zero four point zero seven zero urban lot splits.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Katie?
Roll call vote, Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Chairman Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner Pine.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sides.
Yes.
And Commissioner Wells.
Yes.
Is there anything else on our agenda tonight, Liz and Katie?
I'm Katie, did you want to talk about the? Planners Institute? I think you got things, maybe you've already communicated with the individuals, probably.
I believe, well, now that Merit's back, I can get the paperwork signed, so. Everybody is registered, everybody has hotels.
Katie, you got turned off, were you still talking?
I'm having things, a bit of a feedback issue, there it goes.
Katie, is there anything you want to talk about with the future meetings at all?
I'm going to send out an invite tomorrow for the next subcommittee meeting, so.
That's right.
The next week. And then Liz, I think we're going to be canceling the meeting, the regular meeting on the twenty second, because we have a conflict with city council due to the holiday.
Yes, so they are kicking us out of our accessible slot.
No.
Does that mean we can meet in person?
Well, is there any other staff communications, Liz, on your part, anything going on? Well, I guess I'm entertaining a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Bird, kidding.